Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, can we please take the roll?
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Mathias? He might be. Yeah. Mr. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Jackie?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Superintendent Grant?
Present.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Okay, we are going to start off with celebrations.
Madam Chair and Board Members, we have Mr. Helmhold, who's going to come up and present the Grand Rapids Public Schools robotics program.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts, Chairwoman Grant, and members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here to celebrate the Grand Rapids Public Schools robotics. And with me tonight is Katie Hunter, who's with WIMCAT. She's the Program Manager, and she is who we contract with, their organization is who we contract with, to help us organize all the different teams, from the elementary, which is first LEGO, to the middle school, which is first tech, and to the high school, which is first robotic. And we have many teams behind us here to celebrate, and I'm just going to turn it over to her, because she has all the details.
Good evening, Board Members. It's a pleasure to be here. This program has been a real joy to serve. Since I started at WIMCAT in 2015, I've been working with them. So this is our fifth competition season. Every year we've grown, we've gotten stronger. Overall, over the last five years, we've served over 700 students in GRPS. This year, we had 14 teams at schools all across the school district. Right behind us, we have a vast majority of our FLL teams, which are our LEGO League. Those are grades four through six. Our program in total serves grades four through 12, so elementary all the way through high school. The high school you might be a little bit more familiar with, it stands for First Robotics, FRC, and those are the gigantic robots that throw basketballs across the whole gym. At LEGO League, they start a tiny bit smaller and build up to the giant robots. And I would like to take this time now in front of you to honor some adults who have supported our program and really gone above and beyond, donated a lot of time and energy to make sure the kids have the support they need. So if it's okay, I'd like to call Bryant Zimmerman up to receive an award.[186.62][186.62](applause) Bryant Zimmerman has been instrumental in making this program happen. He, along with Chlore Kaspersky, coordinate a statewide LEGO League competition that we host every year at Innovation Central High School. We have hundreds of students come, dozens and dozens of teams come and compete. They sort of single-handedly pull off the whole thing and provide that opportunity to everyone in Grand Rapids and Kent County, which is one of the few event competitions in the county. I would also like to recognize Laura Kaspersky.[234.12][234.12](applause) Laura serves as our volunteer coordinator for the Robo Battle of the Mines FLO competition. It is entirely volunteer-run. How many volunteers did you recruit this year?
Seventy-five.
Yeah. It's no small feat. You guys who are pulls us up every year, we are deeply appreciative of you. It would not happen without you. Laura's team, Laura and Jeff Kaspersky's team that they run out of GR Montessori, also came in second place for programming statewide at the championships this year. We are incredibly proud of them for that. We were also, I would like to verbally recognize two coaches who were not able to join us tonight at the FLL level. One is Amy Paul. This is her first-year coaching. She started with two teams right after that.[293.12][293.12](applause) And Taryn Eva is a coach at North Park Montessori as well, and she has been coaching two teams for several years in a row.[310.12][310.12](applause) I think that's all I have to share with you. We'll take ourselves out. Don't mind us, we're going to go eat some celebration cake. Yeah, because that's your board meeting.
Thank you.
All right.[383.56][383.56](laughter)
It's pretty naked.
Okay. We do not have public comment for Board Agenda items, so we are going to move to the Committee Chair update. Dr. Baker for the Academic Achievement Committee?
Yeah, thank you. So we met a couple of weeks ago to discuss, one of the things that we have been doing, Academic Achievement Committee, is trying to find ways that the Board could be actually, instead of just approving stuff that comes past the Board, by trying to enter into a dialogue and understand how we can assist with the advancement of the academic goals of the district. If we've paid, this last time, we focused on math, and as we look at the major indices that discuss whether or not we're achieving as a district, math is there, certainly the college readiness scores. So we spent a lot of time on two things. One was, we reviewed the implementation of the second year of the Go Math curriculum. And so, some of you might remember, so this was implemented for the first time September of 18, correct? Yes, September of 18, and we're in the second year. The major issue with this is that we had been, that the standards had shifted to a common core math curriculum, but the materials that we had to teach math did not necessarily correlate to those standards. Go Math does, and it is expected that this will improve math scores across the district, but it, for things like, especially say SAT college readiness, this, you know, if students are taking that test this year, they would have been introduced to that curriculum for just the one year before they took their test. So math is not something that we can measure simply by what happens at high school. More significantly, and so we have been asked by legislators, and if you're connected to the community, people wondering about math instruction, the current Michigan Merrick Curriculum enquires Algebra II and four years of math, and there's some discussion around whether or not Algebra II is the appropriate course that we should be taught. And we discussed that in detail, and I was looking for Jonathan Harper, who talked to us. But there are, there's a series of questions that, you know, that are based on the levels of analysis that would come from the different math courses. Algebra II and higher is about 38% of the questions that would be on the SAT. So a decision to not take Algebra II would be essentially a decision to not pursue higher education, because it would automatically mean that 38% of the question. So if we look at our college readiness scores, and anybody that pays attention to, you know, helping students to get into college from the district, the math SAT score is a major impediment to higher education, and so if we took Algebra II out of that. So I know that Mr. Helmhold and Reverend Gorman has discussed this with legislators about what to do, but essentially, as long as the district and our students are going to be held accountable for this knowledge, then we have to figure out a way to teach the content in Algebra II.
Question, so is the conversation whether or not Algebra II should be required? Obviously, we'll always have it available, but is the conversation, should it be required or should it? Yeah, just tell me more, please.
Whether or not Algebra II should be a requirement for graduating from Michigan high schools. And so there's some conversation that Algebra II is a college readiness course, but students may want to, may not be interested in college.
And right now, it is required, though.
It is a requirement.
I think we discussed the fact that most people, including us prior to the meeting, are not knowledgeable of the fact that it doesn't, the SAT does encompass so many questions that you would need Algebra II in order to answer. And so, we just feel like it's really important that we get that out there to the public, that parents know, you know, if this becomes something where it's not required, you know, at first glance, that might seem like a great choice for your child, if they're struggling with math, or if they don't think they're going into a career that requires math. But here's the reality of it. So how can we get that out to our parents and help them to understand that it's not just the math class, it's the SAT that it's going to affect? So it's not just to take away the math class and everything will be fine. So we're talking about how we can get that out to our parents and...
And certainly as a Board, because, you know, I think that when, if the discussion is, should, does a child need Algebra II to succeed in life, that would be an important question, and there would be differences of opinions as to what courses students could take to be successful in life. But the fact is, though, is that to get into college, the individual student needs to score a certain score on the SAT, and that becomes the, you know, the building, or the, you know, the gateway to college. And so if the student doesn't get that, so if a student chooses at the age of 16 to take an easier math class their junior year, which we could all certainly understand why a student might choose to do that, they're in essence choosing to not cover the content that they're going to be tested on. That's at the individual student level. At this district level, and we've had, you know, people come in here and raise questions that we should be, we should be doing more to make sure our students are college-ready. Well, college-ready means the score on the SAT, and the score on the SAT is determined by your content knowledge of Algebra II. So we have, you know, persistent issue if the SAT wants to change what it tests, or if higher education institutions want to change what they, and that might be the appropriate approach. Statistics might be a much better option for students to have as they go on to college. But the fact is now, to get into college, most of our higher-end institutions are expecting you to be able to have the knowledge of Algebra II.
I was a part of that conversation, and to be totally honest, going into the meeting, I was thinking, oh, I'll do it too. But after I learned what we were told about, you know, 37 questions on the SAT and that relate to Algebra II as a grandma of somebody who is now taking geometry and not looking forward to Algebra II, but I think she will be taking Algebra II, because you just can't afford to blow off 37 questions on the SAT, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that very in-depth review and for the work that that committee is doing.
I wasn't finished, excuse me. I guess, I'm also just thinking a little bit, there's a difference, we're talking admission versus placement, we're talking about the Algebra II piece. I'm not at all advocating for not including Algebra II, but I guess I just wanted to be clear, since legislatively and moving forward, it sounds like this is an issue that the Legislative Committee may need to take up? I guess that's a question I have.
Has the Legislative Committee? I know, I do know that because Superintendent Gorman talked about, I don't know if John's willing to talk, but they have had conversations with legislators about this impact.
And it has been, you know, reported in the newspaper, too, that this is something that the legislature is considering. I mean, I don't know at what stage any of the rules and regulations are, but they are considering eliminating Algebra II as a requirement for a graduate from a Michigan high school.
Yes, I would encourage the Legislative Committee to discuss this. I don't know if it's come up before, so.
John, forgive me if I'm wrong. Currently, we're supporting flexibility, correct? And local control over, yeah, choices for graduation, right?
Yeah.
Because we as a district can set our own requirements as well for graduation. So it doesn't mean that the law changes, we change necessarily. It is certainly open to us.
Yeah. Well, that's why I asked the question, and that's why I mentioned the admission versus placement piece. Obviously, from a mission perspective, most of the four years, the SAT is obviously really important, but from a placement perspective, each institution will have an alternate math placement opportunity to determine where a student should be. But, okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Well, and can I just throw out there, regardless of the stance we take, I think it's important that our parents know the implications of the choice.
Indeed.
Parents and students, yes.
Did the Academic Committee consider the options of students being able to take a dual enrollment course at the local community college with regards to this? Is, I'm thinking that if many students may have to take a remedial math anyway, would it not be a thought process to think, maybe we can support them through that avenue versus having them look at actually failing their requirements to graduate by failing that Algebra II?
Yeah, we didn't get into that. It was more of a, it's just a summary of basically what that decision, what the effects would be of that decision. So we didn't get into the solution process or anything like that, but...
You're correct. So we talked about, the question was, is to what extent does Algebra II impact students' college readiness and end up impacting whether or not they get into school? We did not discuss how that's taught or remediated, other than our conversation with Go Math, which should, in the long run, remediate some of that. But what the district does to help students who don't pass that class, we did not discuss. I support that, and it's my impression that students in GRPS do take dual enrollment classes in math.
Yeah, well...
I know that Ferris offers a bit, I'm pretty sure GRCC does.
Yeah, right now, our dual enrollment guidelines probably would not allow a student to take the equivalent of Algebra II, simply because typically, we don't allow students to take things that are offered at the school. But obviously, there could be some nuance there, for sure. But as it stands right now, I think that might be an impediment.
Forgive my ignorance, is it the same for English? Do we require? I don't know what's required on the English side that matches up with the SAT questions. Do we know that piece? We know math, so what does English look like? Is that required by the legislative?
We did not, we did not. There is a requirement for the number of English classes that you're...
I know that, I was just curious if we know that.
We did not ask the question to what extent, but I haven't heard, I haven't heard legislators ask the question about whether or not we should get English classes for high schools. One thing I know for sure is that students will need to be able to read and write well when they get to college.
Right, of course.
We can debate whether or not they need to...
At the minimum.
Algebra II when they get to college.
I'm with you, I'm with you, yeah.
So I actually have a question, and I'm not sure if Mr. Helmhold is in a position to answer it this time, but I did get some, there seemed to be something different from, about what you said and what we heard in the Academic Achievement Committee about where the district is on Algebra II, and you said flexibility, what does that mean in relationship to a requirement for Algebra II?
So our position is defined rather broadly, and to give as much local control and flexibility, so that if the U as a Board decides to look at maintaining Algebra II, we could maintain that as a requirement of the district. But I know that as we've looked at, some of the more stringent requirements came down, they swung really far one way, which is increased college readiness, but then you have kind of the new pendulum swinging back, where there's demand for skilled trades and jobs. And so, there's a comprehensive piece of legislation from Senator Baumstedt, that the West Michigan Talent Triangle, as well as GRPS, have had a role in encouraging that they explore what is the maximum flexibility. And hearing this discussion, I think that's something that we can bring back to legislative, and we can certainly communicate back to the Talent Triangle, is if there's some concern. So I think it would be helpful for me, because right now, it kind of seems like we have two different positions that are being at least explored, and I think that'd be really helpful to make sure we're clear as to what is your official legislative position? Because as of right now, it supports more flexibility and alternatives to Algebra II as a mandatory requirement.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would encourage that to be brought up by the legislative. I think that, and to be fair, and I'm not suggesting that you're saying something different than what we heard, but what the superintendent said was that, is that we need to teach the content of Algebra II to the extent that the district and the students will be held accountable for that content.
Yeah.
How that gets taught and what the class is called could be something different, but that the content needs to be taught in order for us to prepare our students.
Correct. I think I was hearing, if it is decided that there's more flexibility with that requirement, we're going to have to do the work as a district to make sure that those kids are getting the content wherever they're taking math, because we have to make sure that they can pass those questions on the test.
And I think that's really where the urgency lies, is, and our work. It is recognizing that the standard or the bar has been set higher. Algebra II is certainly higher than the math I took when I graduated. But very, very important, that we look at all aspects of the district and really, you know, create a sense of urgency with this superintendent and whoever else we wind up hiring as superintendent, that we develop a task force, or engage a task force, or educators locally to make sure that we have a plan. Because we have now, with this Promise program, more youngsters will be going to college, they have to be college-ready, and the statistics show that they're not currently operating at that highest level of performance that we need, so that they can ensure success once they enroll in college. You know, you look across the country, and they, you know, they have boot camps for targeted skills that are enhancement, not remediation, but rather enhancement opportunities. They have online opportunities, they're incentivizing greater progress, much like the Reading Olympics and whatnot, where they engage kids in reading, and then they give them rewards for doing that. You know, it's a reward-based society, we need to be looking at and creating more opportunities. I'd suggest that, you know, as the Academic Achievement Committee does its work, that it encourages those kinds of initiatives and explorations on some of the innovative programs that are out there.
Thanks for the opportunity to have this discussion.
Last thing, Mr. Helmhold, Reverend Mathias isn't here, as far as this being on a conversation for Legislative Committee, could you, yeah, thank you.
We all set, Mr. Ross?
Yes, thank you for dealing with my snark, unintentional snarkiness. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so next, we have the Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mel Atkins, joined by Natasha Neal, to come and give us the theme school update, and then I'm going to follow that by two matters that are not directly on your agenda. Mr. Helmhold's going to come up and give us a brief presentation on Student Advancement Foundation and the Promise Zone.
Good evening, Superintendent Grant, sorry about that. Board Members, and Sharon Pitts, I'd like to introduce Natasha Neal, who's Director of Community Student Affairs, and Kyle Preys, the Director of Communications and Enrollment. And they had an integral part in the theme school process.
Good afternoon, President Grant, other Board Members, Ms. Pitts. We just want to give you an update of our theme school process. So I think we were here in October, and we talked about a new process that will be rolling out. We told you guys that we shortened the window to eight weeks for our first round, and what we're looking, right now, we're in the middle of our second round, but we had 1,589 applicants, which is roughly the same amount of applicants that we would have received in that four-month period. We were able to place 1,221 students in their first, second, or third choice. We have our schools, Southwest Community Campus, GR Ford, who do an interview process, and some of our theme schools that accept students between 10th grade and 12th grade, who are doing transcript reviews for 191 students. We have 146 students right now who are on the waitlist, and then we had 31 students who applied for testing schools but didn't have the scores during the first round.
So what do we do with those kids, then? Do they get a second, whatever their second choice might be? Is that...
So those students were, you can either place in your second choice, or you have the opportunity to resubmit scores.
Okay.
So they have winter scores now, so they could resubmit scores if they qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Our second round ends on February 28th, and we believe by the end of our second round, most of our seats will be filled. I think pushing up the window actually did help. Coit and U-Prep have filled more than they've ever filled during this period. Typically, they don't fill until towards the start of the school year, but they're almost full. U-Prep, right now, actually has a waitlist for their ninth-grade program.
And I just want to highlight one other aspect, excuse me, that came out of this, that we, first families were notified earlier than they've ever been notified previously, but half of applicants filled out the application on their phone in less than five minutes.
So we were trying to make the process to apply as easy as possible, and right now, we're working to make the process to register as easy as we made the online application process.
Just a question.
Yep.
Like if a kid applied for a particular theme school and didn't get in, and so they went back to their home school, or whatever the case might be, but now it's a second year, does it count that they've already been through the process? They've, you know, didn't make it the first time, so maybe the second time is better? Or do they all go back to square one?
Everybody goes back to square one. So each year, it's a different application.
Okay.
Because seats in that grade change. For instance, they might have open slots in sixth grade, but no open slots in seventh grade.
Okay.
Any other question? Thank you all for your...
Your hard work, we know it's a big process. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no action, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Couldn't get rid of us that quick.[1652.25][1652.25](laughter) So before I introduce Sally, I also want to give a shout-out to Natasha and to Kyle. Their presentation was very understated compared to the level of lift that they've done, and the systems change that they've implemented, and it just, it really is, it's been great to see our teams, multiple departments, coming together to solve problems and set a course for systems and structures in the future. And I think we'll have more to share in the coming months, as to kind of the leadership and direction around this. This will help to stabilize and improve our enrollment as well. The more our systems are better, the greater the communications, the easier the application, all of that is going to make a difference. And the feedback we've got from those who lived through last year, that was not the greatest experience, has been very positive. I think people saw that we listened, we took action, and they're seeing the fruits of that labor, so. They've already left.[1708.04][1708.04](laughter) So I'm going to turn it over to Sally from, she's the Executive Director of Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation, to talk a little bit about the 150th.
President Grant, Sharon Pitts, good to see you all, everyone. We are so excited about the 150th celebration that we are kicking off on July 1st with City High marching down Pennsylvania Avenue with a big banner that says, "Celebrating 150 Years of Grand Rapids Public Schools," and that's in Washington, DC.[1735.33][1735.33](laughter) So we're so excited about that, but I need your help. We are putting together this committee, and John reached out to people, and we need more. We really need your help. We want to make this such a fabulous piece of the community and celebrating 150 years of Grand Rapids Public Schools. So we are holding a meeting on February 27th here at Franklin Campus at 3:00 PM, and if you can't make it, if you can send a representative, if you know people, we don't want to have a huge committee, but we need more people. I can tell you that the community is super excited about this, from everyone, from the convention center, to the hotels, to everyone, they want to celebrate with you. I said to John at one point, I said, "I think the city wants a party, so let's show them." You know, one of the things that we're talking about is maybe, hopefully, having the biggest class reunion that Grand Rapids has ever seen in place of our MindShare event next year. So please come out, please help us, we need your help, and we're so excited to... So please come out, please help us, we need your help, and we're so excited to be a part of this, so, thank you.
And I would just add, we're also not only looking for volunteers for the committee, but if you have distinguished alum who you think we should be interviewing to be part of this, one of the things we're also looking at is how do we document that 150-year history and celebrate some of our most distinguished alum? We have many, many individuals out there, but we need recommendations and thoughts and suggestions. So I will be sending out another follow-up email and help spread the word.
Right, and you can reach out to John, or Miranda, or myself, any one of us, we're happy to hear from you. Any suggestions, any ideas? We're, we're super excited, and we can't wait to just keep this ball rolling. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, just a brief update on the Grand Rapids Promise Zone. If you, unless someone was living under a rock, they didn't see the news that occurred, historic occasion where the Grand Rapids Promise Zone Authority Board did approve the development plan to move forward with the Promise Scholarship for the class of 2020. This is something that, at that same day they approved it, we also received word from Dr. Pink from Grand Rapids Community College, where they have come to the table with $500,000 in scholarships. So between that $500,000, and then the pledges from board members to help secure the remaining $2.5 million, we're well on our way to raising the $3 million to cover our local match, our local, the local amount for year one and year two, until that state tax capture kicks in in year three. And it really isn't until year five that the capture itself is actually, the revenue from that exceeds the cost of the scholarships. There's a lot of X-factors, there's a lot more information to be determined, but as of right now, it's an associate degree or the equivalent certification at Grand Rapids Community College for any student that lives in the city of Grand Rapids, in the city limits, and graduates from one of the 22 high schools, public, private, and charter. That is required by state law. We're trying to really make sure that the public understands this is not just for GRPS, and that it's not our decision whether it's for, to omit charter schools or private schools. This is required by state law to provide a minimum associate degree or certification for all residents graduating from a, a high school in the city. The full scholarship, grades nine, and if you're in the city in grades nine and 10, and eventually graduate, you, you get the full, full scholarship after, after FAFSA, after, after using all your federal aid. If a student resides their 11th grade year, they are up to 50% of the scholarship, in 12th grade, it's zero. And so there is no grade point requirement. The board is committed to exploring opportunities to look at college readiness supports, not unlike the Challenge Scholars, where they have college career coordinators. So I think you'll see more and more information. Right now, our focus over the next four months is to market this to those existing 12th graders, make sure they're aware of it, make sure they fill out their FAFSA, make sure they fill out, if they're going to go to CC, they've got to go through the process of applying to Grand Rapids Community College. The other thing, the other thing that Dr. Gorman and Chairwoman Teresa Weather O'Neill, we're looking internally at GRPS about what we can do with our existing 12th graders to provide those college readiness supports, both during the school year, in zero hour, seventh hour, summer, how do we make sure that they are ready and able to go into GRCC without remediation, without, with being prepared to really maximize the use of the scholarship? So it's an exciting time to be part of Grand Rapids. We're getting calls from people that are, live in the city and are attending schools outside the district, and I think some people are thinking twice about coming back and having their kids in our schools.
May I ask one question? I, I assume that in the future, we're looking at, but can you tell me how far in the future it might be before this money might be allowed to be spent at another, a four-year college?
That's a great question. So to give you an idea, it's about $10 million over 10 years to cover the cost of this scholarship. Now, that, that figure could rise. We, right now, we're going based on the current matriculation numbers, and so we know, like in Muskegon, they saw their numbers increase quite substantially. So we're, we're estimating there's going to be an increase. So if we were to do the two-year, or, or an associate, or the equivalent at a four-year institution, that price tag goes from $10 million to $26 million if we, that was just to go to Grand Valley. If you added all four years, it goes up to about $56 million over 10 years. And if we were to do a four-year tuition, it is upwards of $190 million over 10 years. The, the state tax capture will never come close to having the revenue. It would require substantial local fundraising, but the, the board has said that their vision is for this to be a four-year scholarship at some point in time. And how do we get there? That will require a feasibility study to look at what local fundraising, the interest from the philanthropic community, from the foundations and others. And so I think the vision is there, we're going to, we're kind of building the plane as we're flying it, because the, and again, reminder, the reason they move fast is that by, once Treasury approves, and by the way, Michigan Department of Treasury has not approved yet, but we anticipate they will, that triggers the base tax capture year. So if they had waited a year, we would have left $750,000 annually every year moving forward. And so it was a decision to move forward so that we can maximize that tax capture, so we can get as much of that revenue in, that might minimize some of the local fundraising pressure, but it also helps give us a leg up, so that if the board does want to expand it beyond an associate degree, they will have more revenue to do so. That's it.
And I would just like to say, and I've been having this conversation with a lot of people in the community, I want to, to thank you all, all of my colleagues, because this now is a community-wide effort, and it spans several districts, but it started here. And so thank you all for that initial support, because this district is really what started it moving, and also to the GRPS administration. I mean, it has been a very heavy lift on you all, we know that, and, but we know how GRPS is about our kids, right? So it was a heavy lift, but you all jumped right in, and you really helped to, to make this happen for our babies, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Next, we have discussion items. So an update on the superintendent search was, did everyone receive the communications today? So this Thursday, we will be meeting to do our first review of the candidates. So in our first round of the search, we did receive materials beforehand to review. We won't have that this time. And the search firm is, how they explained to me, and their reasoning is that as soon as they print off materials and disperse materials to us, all of that information is open and free to the public. And because this, any superintendent search is so sensitive for anyone who has put their information or their bid in, even if they are not selected to be interviewed, even if we review them on Thursday and we choose not to discuss them anymore, their information is now public, and we know what that means for their career and for their district. So by having a closed meeting and reviewing the information in that meeting, and going from the start number down to the four to six people that we choose, the people that we do not choose, their name never has to be released, their career never has to be in jeopardy. And that is, that understanding is also what allowed us to have such a good turnout for the people who did apply. And from, from what I'm told by the search firm, there's a very good turnout, and we have some candidates that are really good. So we want to keep that good faith by not releasing their names to the public for the people who we don't choose to go forward with. But after we come out of closed session, the four to six candidates that we choose, their names will be released, we will share that information, and then we will move forward with the process. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so it will be an exciting evening. It will not be a quick meeting, so you can come, come ready for, for some discussion. But what you did receive today were the interview questions, once we do get to the first and second rounds. Please take the time to review those and give input and feedback, because we will finalize those questions on Thursday. Do we have public comment for non-agenda items?
No.
All right. Ms. Pitts, you have comments?
No comments.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No comment.
Ms. Davis? I was going to call you Ms. Lewis. Ms. Williams? Ms. Shaki?
No comment.
All right, Ms. Lewis?
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
No real comment. I was going to give some extra kudos to Mr. Atkins, Ms. Neal, and Kyle as well. I was planning to say that in my comments, but they walked off, so. But, but yeah, I guess just please, I guess ditto what you said, because I was definitely thinking the same thing, that, you know, the, the progress from an efficiency perspective definitely goes a long way, much more, oh, Ms. Atkins is still here, thank you, sir. Definitely goes a long way.
It's all him.
But like you said, though, Ms. Helmuth, there's a lot of ripple effect to, to when we do things, you know, more efficiently, it just definitely has a ripple effect on a lot of different things that, that you can't necessarily measure. So I just wanted to really underscore, you know, your, your shout-out to them. Other than that, no comment.
Wonderful, meeting adjourned.